Good afternoon, everyone. This is the Commercial Cannabis Regulation Town Hall Meeting. This is the third in a series of four meetings in the community to provide more information and education on our cannabis program here in the city of Hawthorne. Welcome to you, our participants here in our Hawthorne Memorial Center and to our viewers on Channel 22. I will go ahead and let the board introduce themselves and then I will let the consultants introduce themselves and then it'll go back to me for further instructions and direction. Before we get started, let's go ahead and give some housekeeping. Please silence your cellphones. If you must take a call, please take your call outside of this room. There are restrooms in the back in the lobby area. If you'd like to address the chair, please raise your hand to be recognized. I will at this time allow for present introduction and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll start to my left.
Good afternoon. My name is Vaughn Norris, City Manager, City of Hawthorne.
Greg McLean, I'm the interim Community Development Director for Hawthorne.
Hi, everyone. I'm Robert Kim with the City Attorney's Office.
Councilmember Angie Reyes-English, Chair of the Cannabis Program.
Sergeant Kenny Craig, Hawthorne Police Department.
I'm Ebony Anderson with EJMA Planning and Development.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Tony Forge, Cannabis Attorney and Consultant with Four Leaf Consulting.
If you could please rise and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Face the flag. Place your hand over your heart. Repeat after me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Ms. Anderson, I'll go ahead and give it to you.
Thank you. Just once again, I'm Ebony with EJMA Planning and Development. We are a boutique land use firm and we specialize in specialty land use issues such as cannabis. We do a lot of cannabis policy work. Today, we're going to talk to you about the cannabis program here in the city of Hawthorne and walk you through what that could potentially look like as we start to develop it. As you will see in the presentation, we have lots of information about cannabis in general, what's happening at the state level, what's happening locally, and then also at the, from a state perspective, what cities are doing throughout the state. So we'll take you through a brief overview first. Nick, if you can turn to the overview slide for me, please. We'll take you through an introduction of Prop 64. We'll give you a legislative update and go through what's happened specifically in your city here regarding cannabis. And then we will talk cannabis from a state perspective and give you some of the health facts from the Public Health Department regarding cannabis. They have Let's Talk Cannabis Initiative that answers a lot of facts about cannabis, facts about the regulations, and we'll go through some of those. And then we'll go through the state regulations for how operators have to operate from a state perspective. And then we'll give you that licensing overview for what we plan for the city of Hawthorne. And then finally, we'll have a pretty robust question and answer section so that all of you have an opportunity to ask any questions about the program or the presentation in general. So to get started, I'm going to pass over to my colleague, Tony, who will start our opening with an introduction to Proposition 64.
Thank you. What we want to do before we get into the meat and potatoes of the presentation... Okay, is that better?
Yes, please.
Okay. What we want to do is just give you a little legislative history of how we got here in California, how legalization started. And it really started in 1996 with Prop 215. That is the Compassionate Use Act. And that basically said if you are an individual who are suffering from some type of debilitating disease or medical condition, AIDS, glaucoma, cancer and such, you could grow and use cannabis without fear of federal prosecution or local prosecution or criminal prosecution. That's the main thing with the Compassionate Use Act was caretakers and also people, patients, were able to use cannabis without fear of criminal prosecution. And then fast forward in 215, we have the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act. And that really said, you know, before the model in around 215 was not-for-profit. This said, now we're going to go to a profit model. We're going to look at regulations. We're going to look at business licenses, commercial cannabis licenses, and it really developed the framework. It also said that we're going to have a regulatory body that's going to regulate cannabis. At the time, it was the BCC, the Bureau of Cannabis Control. Now it's the DCC. Ebony will talk about that a little later on. And it really put this framework around legislation in terms of cannabis, commercial cannabis licensing. Then the next year in 2016 is Prop 64, what we voted on. And Prop 64 said if you're 21 and older, you're able to have one ounce of flower, eight ounces of cannabis concentrate, or grow six plants per residence. It also said state and local municipalities, you have the ability to not only regulate cannabis, but to tax cannabis. You can tax it with growing, with manufacturing, with producing and selling. And so really, the whole notion of adult use, commercial cannabis, the notion that you can, if you're 21 years and older, can have cannabis, came as a result of Prop 64. And this is how we voted statewide. It was the majority, 60% and in LA County, close to 60% there. And so we had some regulations and SB 93 really took the medicinal world that we talked about with Prop 215 and married it with what we know with adult use Prop 64. So the governor said it doesn't make sense to have two sets of regulations kind of dealing with the same thing. We're going to put the medicinal and the adult use regulations together. And also what AB 133 said is now you can have vertical integration. You can have multiple licenses per residence or business. Not residence, it is business. And so this gave individuals the opportunity to have more than one license type. And so this is what's happened in the city of Hawthorne as a timeline. So in 2016, for your urgency ordinance, you had a moratorium on non-medicinal cannabis and that was extended with the Urgency Ordinance 2134. That extended it by 10 months and 15 days. In 2017, you had a zone amendment that basically restricted the control and use of non-medicinal cannabis. And then 2021, we have that on November 3rd, 2020, you passed the Measure CC, which basically allowed for a business tax for cannabis of 5%. And also during that time, we have approved the Working Committee and we're talking about the Working Committee a little later on. And then that led us to here where we are today, really talking about cannabis, informing the community. We have approximately four of these meetings that are going on to inform Hawthorne residents about cannabis. And these are the results from the Measure CC. And so next slide. One thing we wanted to talk about was the Mythbusters concerning cannabis. I think there's a lot of misinformation out there. And so what we're hoping to do is give you the correct information and not just go with the rumors and innuendos are concerning cannabis. Number one, in order for you to have medicinal cannabis, you have to be 18 years or older with a physician's recommendation. With Prop 64, you can have adult use cannabis if you're 21 years or older. You can have cannabis at your private residence. You cannot have it in public or smoke it in public or ingest it in public. And some landlords do restrict the use of cannabis and that's within their rights. So you really need to look at what your rental agreement has to say, if anything, about cannabis. You can grow six plants at your residence if you're at least 21 years or older. And you cannot drive or be a passenger with an open container of cannabis. You'll see later on with the presentation with Ebony that cannabis comes packaged and childproof sealed. And so if you're going to keep it in the car, you have to keep it that way or lock it up in your trunk. And so other things, you cannot consume cannabis in public places like restaurants, bars and hotels. You cannot smoke cannabis where it's illegal to smoke tobacco. You cannot smoke cannabis or ingest cannabis within a thousand feet of a school, daycare center, youth center while children are present. You cannot take cannabis across state lines, even if you're going into another legal state. So if you're going from California to Nevada, you cannot cross lines with cannabis and especially on the plane, that is a no-no. And we've seen internationally what happens if you have cannabis in your bag. So can't cross state lines. Again, you cannot drive with an open container of cannabis and you cannot use, possess, smoke, ingest cannabis on federal lands like national parks. And the reason being is because cannabis still is federally illegal. It's a Schedule I drug. And where can you get your cannabis? And Ebony's going to talk about this when she goes into the license types, but what you can buy at dispensaries is tested cannabis. So as of 2018, all cannabis that is sold in a licensed dispensary has to be tested by a state testing center. Ebony's going to talk about the license types. One of them is testing. And so what you can get are packaged flowers, pre-rolls, topicals, edibles. You can buy accessories such as pipes, rolling paper, vape cartridge batteries, and branded merchandise. A lot of people have hoodies, hats and the such, and that's all that you can purchase at a licensed dispensary. And the hours of operation, people think that you can sell cannabis all night long. No, the state has indicated from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM is when you can sell cannabis. Transactions have to be finished in the store by 10 o'clock PM. And if you're getting delivery service, meaning cannabis is being delivered to you, you have got to have, the drivers have to be back at the dispensary by 10:00 PM. So it's no 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning. It's only allowed during these types. In terms of security plans, security plans are very robust from a state level. You have to have active security on site. You can determine as a retail operator if that's going to be armed or not armed. You also have to have 24-hour surveillance video cameras. The state is very clear about the types of cameras, where they should be placed, pixels, the same with lighting. It has to be, your facility has to be well-lit and the points of entry have to be secured and monitored. And so Ebony's going to talk a little bit now about what we're seeing in jurisdictions that have had cannabis for a period of time in terms of crime rates and the such.
Thank you, Tony. We have seen in California, commercial cannabis from 2018 to now, which is a very short timeframe. So we wanted to look forward towards some cities that have had it longer. One of those cities being one of the first ones who had commercial cannabis, a commercial cannabis program is the city of Colorado. I'm sorry, the city of Denver in Colorado. So we took some of their crime statistics here and you can see some of those on the screen. But one of the things that we hear a lot from the community are security concerns and crime concerns. So we did take some of the crime statistics specifically around black market crimes and also some other violent crimes. So I just want to put that caveat out there. We're not comparing theft or petty theft or other types of crimes. We're looking at violent crimes. And during the first year of implementation of their commercial program, which was part of Amendment 64, Denver experienced a 2.2% decrease in violent crime rates and an 8.9% reduction in property crime offenses. And all of that is due to legalization of cannabis or regulation of cannabis. So one of the things we talk about frequently at community meetings and with the community is the difference between embracing cannabis and welcoming it versus regulation. And so what we're asking all of you to do is frame the context of our presentation in terms of regulation and the way that the city can adopt regulations that help operators come into compliance with not only the state regulations, but those that we will be working on with the city officials to ensure that cannabis operators are operating safely within the city and making sure that they are paying taxes and following all of the regulations that will be specific to Hawthorne. The next state we saw was Washington State and they also had violent crimes rates reduced and their rates decreased by 10% between 2011 and 2014, which is the beginning of their program. So it's important to note that a lot of these crimes that were being reported, violent crimes, were happening with the illicit market. And so with the ability to actually come into a regulated market where you can legally operate your business, a lot of the violent crimes around cannabis have decreased. So next, we'll go into a good discussion about what is required. We start there because a lot of local residents don't have a great idea of what is required at the state level. A lot of the outreach at the state level was done early in 2016 and 17. So we like to do a refresher on what the agencies are that oversee cannabis and what it is that they are actually regulating. So as Tony previously mentioned, the original department that was created or agency that was created was the department, I'm sorry, the Bureau of Cannabis Control. It is now called the Department of Cannabis Control. Under the previous licensing framework, there were different agencies that oversaw parts of the process. So I like to show this slide so that when you're doing your own personal research, you know which agencies previously oversaw the process and then how they're integrated into this new department the governor has created. The first one is the Cal Cannabis Program, which was part of the California Department of Food and Agriculture, and that department oversaw cultivation activities. So anything growing related to cannabis, that was the agency that oversaw it. Now we are seeing all of the cultivation activities being oversaw by the Department of Cannabis Control, but some of those same agents are part of that department, still looking at the agricultural aspects and regulations for the cultivation of cannabis. The next department is the Public Health Department, California Department of Public Health. They were originally responsible for overseeing manufacturing. So any products of cannabis, so we have cannabis flower and then the products thereof, such as topicals and tinctures, edibles. The Department of Public Health oversaw and participated in writing those regulations. The next was the Bureau of Cannabis Control, which at the time only oversaw licensing for distribution and retail slash delivery and testing. Also micro businesses, which we will touch a tad bit on, but a micro business is a combination of these. So the Bureau of Cannabis Control oversaw licensing and regulations for those activities. And now the new Department of Cannabis Control oversees licensing and monitoring and regulation of all of them, all of the commercial cannabis activities and license types. So we'll talk a little bit about the license types. At the state level, there are various sub-license types and so we won't go into every single license that you can obtain at the state, but we will talk about the major licenses there, there within the state regulations. So the first one is cultivation and cultivation includes small, medium, or large operations. You could have mixed light, indoor or outdoor. And then we have something called specialty cottage and nurseries. All of those license types are considered cultivation. And cultivation includes any type of activity involving planting or growing the cannabis Next, we'll show you some photos of what these types look like. The first one is indoor cultivation. It's exactly what it sounds like, indoor growing. So all of the activities for this license type have to happen indoors. And that's exactly what you're going to see in most of Southern California, especially more developed areas like the Los Angeles region. You're going to see mostly indoor cultivation. Most cities don't have the green areas to allow outdoor cultivation, but some counties in Southern California do. For example, Riverside County allows some outdoor cultivation activities. The next one is outdoor cultivation and it's pretty straightforward. It's growing your farm outdoors. So you're using direct sunlight and that is your lighting method. The next one is mixed light cultivation and a lot of times what you're going to see is something that looks like a greenhouse. So you're going to have a combination of artificial lights, like lamps, and you're also going to have direct sunlight. The next licensing type is called manufacturing. And again, it's pretty straightforward. It's any type of activity that it requires manufacturing of a byproduct of cannabis. So cultivation pretty much covers the flower, but if you make any products thereof, you have to have a manufacturing license to do that, including infusion. And here is just a nice photo of a cannabis manufacturing lab. As you can see, it looks very similar to a food-grade commercial lab and it's regulated somewhat the same way. And it's pretty straightforward. There's not a lot of excitement with the manufacturing labs. However, it is important to note that some of the extraction process, processes used for cannabis do have what the fire department considers hazardous materials. So they could be using butane or propane. So those things need to be regulated by the fire department. Without regulations, without adopting regulations, the city doesn't have any fire regulations to enforce for cannabis. So even though you're saying, "We don't want any operators," if you chose to not allow cannabis in your city, you still are going to be looking for enforcement because if you have unlicensed operators, you aren't going to be able to have the fire department overseeing those activities. So it's important to have licensing for that reason, to make sure that you have the regulatory body and framework to make sure that the activities are happening safely. The next license type is distribution. I like to always take a second here and explain the difference between distribution and delivery. So when you think distribution, think wholesale. So it's business to business. Distributors are not allowed to distribute cannabis to customers. They can only distribute it to other licensees. So they can do exchanges between cultivators and manufacturers and they can deliver cannabis to retailers for sale, but they cannot sell it to customers directly. There is first-party and third-party distribution. First-party, for example, is just a producer producing their own product. For example, if I was a manufacturer and I made edibles, I can also get a distribution license to allow me to distribute my own product. I can also have a standalone license that allows me to collect products from other producers and then sell them to a retailer. That's third-party distribution. The state allows for both. This is a picture of a cannabis distribution center and yes, those packages do have cannabis. You can see that there's a barcode on all of them. The state requires that each package be tracked. So all cannabis from seed to sale is tracked by the state in this robust system called METRIC, which is a fun workshop in and of itself. It is very, very detailed. It tells you exactly from literally what seed sprouted, how many plants, where they went, who touched them, when they were touched, when they were packaged, when they were tested. Everything is monitored by the state and they absolutely do monitor. And if you miss any part in that process, you get a nice friendly email reminding you that you were in violation. So you want to make sure, when we're, we're going to make sure when we're writing the ordinance that we're at least meeting state regulations because all municipalities have to, at the very least, follow the state regulations, but they can also be more restrictive. So if your city wants something more restrictive than the state regulations, you can also implement those. So track and trace is a good way to monitor. The city may have additional requirements for distributors or other licensees, but as you can see here, it's pretty straightforward, nothing real exciting, but a warehouse. So that's what it would look like in your city. It's pretty much something that would look like any other kind of warehouse. And there's also testing labs. So Tony touched on this a little bit, but the state does license all cannabis testing labs and they have to be accredited by an accrediting body that is independent from all other persons in commercial cannabis. So that also means that the facilities, whoever owns those facilities, cannot hold any other cannabis licenses. So the moment you obtain a testing lab license, you no longer can have any other licenses. And obviously, the state does that so that there's not a conflict in interest with the And finally, there's the retail license type. And so we used to call these during our Prop 215 days dispensaries, we now call them retail, commercial retail or cannabis retail licenses. And that is where you would go, a store. So they have a storefront license and then a non-storefront. Non-storefront is what we commonly know as delivery. So storefront licenses include delivery. So any retailer on the state level is allowed to do delivery. And delivery licenses are allowed to do delivery, but cannot have a storefront. So delivery licenses are not open to the public. You cannot walk up to a delivery location and order cannabis. That's not allowed. You can go into a retail store. So there is that, that small distinction between the two, storefront and non-storefront. And here are a couple photos of regulated shops. These are licensed shops within California. And as you can see, a lot of them look similar to like an Apple Store. They do not look like what we saw from, you know, pre, before Proposition 64. We have lighting requirements from building and safety now. There's fire requirements. You have a ton of planning comments that you have to address and design, design elements and architectural elements that get reviewed by the city. There are a lot of regulations for regulated shops. So you're not going to get, "Hey, just come in and build whatever you want." That doesn't happen with commercial cannabis because you have to go through all of the city licensing process, including the other departments. And then, as I mentioned before, there is a business type called micro business. We don't see it as much now that we had Assembly Bill 133, I believe, because the micro business was designed for smaller operations that had multiple activities. For example, you might have a small cultivation, a small cultivation area in your dispensary or in the back of your dispensary. That was very common. Or you might do infusions, you might do butters or some other edible. That was very common. We don't see as many micro businesses being developed now, but it is a license type. You do have some footprint restrictions. You can only have a 10,000-square-foot canopy. So we don't see as many, but they do exist and you have to do three of the activities in order to get a micro business license type. And now we'll go into the licensing framework. We'll look at some of the models at the state, but also more of a, from a local lens. At the city, at the state, we have quite a few different license types and I have some of the main ones here. As you can see, there's 12 major ones, but even within those 12, there's sub-license types based on the size. You know, if you have a small operation, how many square feet do you have for cultivation? What's your canopy? Those might change the subtype you get, but ultimately, this is what you're going to see at the state. On the local side, you see more of an overarching license type, like an umbrella. You're going to have cultivation and that includes any cultivation activity. If it's manufacturing, it includes any manufacturing activities that are allowed in your city. Some cities only allow non-volatile manufacturing, which means you can't use any of those hazardous materials. Some allow for both. Some allow for both, what we call... You know what? I don't know the number six and seven, non-volatile and volatile. Those are the two different manufacturing types. So depending on what your city allows, that's what you're going to be able to do ultimately. But generally, when we're looking at licensing structures or frameworks, you're going to see these overarching umbrellas. Now we'll talk a little bit about what other cities are doing and what the county is doing around commercial cannabis licensing. This is a map of all of the, or a lot of the cities that have allowed some type of commercial cannabis use. And this is within the county of LA. So I just want to put that in perspective, because there are counties now that allow commercial cannabis that hadn't previously, or that are, you know, kind of far from you, like Riverside County. San Bernardino allows some activities, but this is just in your region, so LA County. Here's a list of all of those cities. You can see there's a mix of size, there's a mix of different economic statuses and location. So we have everything from West Hollywood, Pasadena, and Malibu, to smaller cities like Avalon and Bell and Cudahy. We have them everywhere, and it's quite a few. I'm sorry. The county also has recently passed or instructed their cannabis department to start looking into licensing or reactivating. They started back in 2017, 18, starting drafting an ordinance, but it never passed. So it looks like the county is going to start allowing licenses, and they're allowing quite a few retail licenses as well. So the pockets that are unincorporated around your city will now be allowed to do cannabis activity. That includes delivery. So right now, you can deliver between cities. So a lot of cities are looking at cannabis from that perspective. It's going to be happening surrounding you, and especially with delivery, it's allowed right now. So pulling in those tax dollars is an economic initiative within many, many cities. Next, we're just going to go in. I wanted to show some visuals of what commercial retailers or commercial cannabis retailers look like. This one is Gorilla RX. It is on Crenshaw Boulevard, and I think that's important to say, because when we're talking about dispensaries, oftentimes, community members think that they're going to be, you know, an eyesore in their community. This is Gorilla RX. The owner is a social equity applicant, and that is something that your council has also looked at, is the equity in cannabis or lack thereof, and addressing that and allowing licenses for residents and folks who have been disproportionately affected by the war on drugs. This is one of those shops. This is a social equity retailer in Los Angeles. It is licensed, and as you can see, it's absolutely beautiful. The next slide I just wanted to show you is some of the things that Tony brought up about packaging. As you can see, this looks like something you, all of these products look like something you'd find in a Rite Aid or a Save-On. The state is very, very strict on packaging. Not only packaging, but what is actually on the packaging, the labels, what has to be on the main panel of the label, what other information consumers have to know, testing, all of the testing requirements. The results have to be on the packaging. It tells you exactly what the dosage is and how much THC. That is really important, because when we're talking about previous regulations that allowed, you know, dispensaries to exist, but didn't really regulate all of those activities, you weren't sure what you were getting. It didn't require any special packaging. It didn't require any disclosures. It didn't require much. So now we have a very, very robust system of packaging and labeling that is monitored by the state. And again, here's just another picture of what a retailer could look like, what's behind those shelves and the types of products they carry. Again, it looks like something you'd find in a convenience store or a Save-On or a Here's just another example of that. This is Calma. This is a dispensary that is on, it's in West Hollywood, and it's on La Brea Avenue. It's a beautiful store. Again, we have another photo after this one, but it's just important to note that they blend in right in with the community, because the cities are able to create design guidelines. So if you have dilapidated areas in your city that will be eligible for cannabis retail or any other cannabis activities, the city can create guidelines, development standards and guidelines for these operators. And here's just another picture of that same dispensary. You can see in the back, there is a huge wall-to-wall, basically, TV or monitor that they display different calming scenes in. So this is a dispensary that really is focused on wellness and the properties of cannabis for wellness. As you can see, that is a very expensive build-out. So it isn't cheap. The operators are really invested in their community, the communities that they're operating in. And with these types of build-outs, they're not interested in losing their license. So operators do comply, they do meet with the city, they tend to be very good community partners, because if they are not, the city does have the ability to shut them down. So it's really important that you understand that these are operators, that business operators that are coming in and investing millions and millions of dollars into the city. And generally, they care about their business, so they're going to follow those regulations that we all create. And then finally, we'll give an overview of the licensing process. I like to put this slide in to just give you an idea of the language that is used, but I will tell you this first. Anytime you see that little red dot "new," that means that it was a slide that wasn't included in the original presentation, but some of the conversations that we had with the community came up, and so we added a couple of slides in. From our last presentation, there have been no new slides. So these are just slides that were not included in the original workshop. So we have statutes, we have regulations, and we have ordinances. Statutes are laws that are written and passed by the state, and then regulations are rules created by agencies. Sometimes it is state agencies, sometimes they're county agencies. And then we have ordinances that are created by local cities. And that's what we are working on in the working group, is developing an ordinance that will regulate cannabis activity in the city. And that's why it's very, very important that we get your feedback and some of your concerns, so that we can make sure that that ordinance addresses all of those concerns of the community. Want to take a break?
Yeah. Did we finish the last slide?
And so I guess we'll take the break after this slide, but this is an overview of where we are going, where we are and where we're going. So the first step was establishing the working committee. The working committee meets every other Thursday, and we have a full agenda that's posted on the website. You can locate that and all of the cannabis regulation from the city's cannabis homepage. The first act of the working group was community outreach, and that's the series of four workshops that we're doing. This is the third one. The fourth one is on March 30th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it'll still be here. The next step would be developing the ordinance, and so that's why we're getting feedback, so we can develop that. Then the city will develop the Licensing and Oversight Committee. So the Licensing and Oversight Committee will be the committees that oversee the licensing process, and that includes the selection process. And so there'll be an application process, and then we'll go into all of our normal city permitting, which includes the planning department, the building department, fire department. And then the operators will be able to pull permits and build out, and then operations begin. So as you can see, we're at the very beginning of this process. You all have opportunities to give us your feedback on what you'd like to see as part of the ordinance, and we'll take some of those comments today as well.
Thank you so much, Ms. Anderson. I'm going to go ahead and continue the hearing. I am going to allow for Q and A questions. If there's questions that have been written down on... You can't hear me? Okay. This is all being recorded, so just raise your hand and let me know. Okay? Thank you. Again, if you have business cards, the, excuse me, there's five by, three-by-five cards that were handed out. If you have any questions, please raise your card. We'll have some staff go around and pick up your card, bring it up to the front. I will allow also a Q and A question session, so if you'd like, instead of using your card, there'll be a two-minute question. If anyone would like to start with a question, please address it to the appropriate person, individual. You have two minutes. There's a mic off to my right. If you'd like to, at this time, go ahead and start forming a line so that you could ask your question. If not, we'd like to know that, too. Do you have a card, sir? Do you have a question? You have two minutes. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Guy Hocker. I am a longtime real estate broker in the city of Hawthorne. I was under the impression this was to be a town meeting, and I've had to listen to 40 minutes of a sales pitch, it seemed like. Nonetheless, I'm a broker, and I have been selling real estate in the area, and I was thrilled to see that in the South Bay area, I may be overstepping. I didn't see any cities that have marijuana. Maybe you could answer the question. Is there a city, Torrance have marijuana? El Segundo?
I'm going to have you ask your question, and then I'll...
Okay. Then I'll just make the statement, then. As a real estate broker, I can unequivocally say that in our city, that it would be detrimental to the homeowners, the renters, and those people who are against marijuana. The question also bait, what advantage is it from the panel's point of view to have marijuana in the city of Hawthorne? Does anybody have a positive input that would say, "This will be good for the city of Hawthorne"? Or is that just too broad a question?
Thank you for your questions, Mr. Hocker. And then I would, I will go ahead and give it back to Mrs. Anderson, just so that the general public is aware. This is the third town hall meeting we have had in the community. There's one more that is coming on the 30th at 6:00 p.m. So these have been very transparent community meetings. The individuals to my right are consultants that were hired by the city to provide us guidance, direction, and further information on a good cannabis program. We are here, appointed by the mayor and the council unanimously, to provide a working group committee that will oversee the ordinance and all that it will take, which includes a number of consideration. How much? How many licenses? Zoning? Public safety? Exactly where? What else? Legal? Legal? I'm missing some things, sir, so I want to make sure.
Thank you, Mr. Hocker, for your comments and your questions. And that's what we're here for, is to get community input. Can you hear me okay? Can...
I can't hear you.
Okay. So I want to first thank you for your comments and your questions and for your involvement in your input. That's what the community outreach is about. But I want to say that the policies are not something that this working committee is here for. The decision, we don't have discretion. We've been given a directive from city council since the passage of Measure CC to look into zoning and ordinance for cannabis in the city of Hawthorne. So we went through city council meetings where various types of license were directed to be looked at by the working committee. The working committee is not here to come back and say, "This is a good ordinance or a bad ordinance, or we're not going to do an ordinance." We're given directions to come up with an ordinance for the city, but the discretion authority is with the city council. It'll go back to city council for zoning and the ordinance, and if city council at that time decides that we don't want to have a commercial cannabis business in the city of Hawthorne, and they vote that way, then we won't have one. So we're not here to say, "This is a great thing," or tell you, "This is positive or negative." We have the consultant, because the city staff don't have the expertise in this area. But however, ultimately, it'll come back to city council.
Thank you. And Ms. Anderson, would you like to provide the county, the city currently regulating cannabis, those cities and other cities that are in the pipelines?
Yes, Nick, if you can just put up the regulating cities slide. And then also, the ones closest to here. I know there was questions about what cities around Hawthorne are allowing cannabis. The obvious one is the city of Los Angeles, but also Carson and Hermosa Beach are also allowing cannabis. There are other cities in talks of how they're going to regulate cannabis. I know there's been conversations at city council meetings at the city of Gardena and other surrounding cities. They may not have an ordinance yet, but there are cities that are in the process of deciding what that framework is going to look like for the city.
Are there anyone else that would like to ask a question? If you could go ahead and take the mic. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. I had just a general question. I know, was there a public comment section of this, or were we classifying this particular exchange as our public comment?
Yeah, you have two minutes. This is a public...
Okay. Well, yeah, I wanted to come, thank you guys again for doing this, just to add some support for the idea that I think cannabis is a great idea for what we're doing, like the work that you guys are doing here. I know there was a question about getting community involvement or community feedback of what it was we would like to see in a particular ordinance. So the general idea, I was thinking about after talking with some of our residents, was looking at doing something, having the city start off with 10 licenses, allowing 10 business licenses with the ability to go up to 15, have pending audit of safety, and how well those things worked for the city, at least starting with four licenses that would do retail, three that were available for retail and lounge things, something similar to what we've seen, like a Lowell's Cafe is a higher-end, is a retail establishment that also has a lounge thing where they allow people to eat and do the dining. It could kind of get to the idea that Hawthorne was looking at bringing more restaurants or places that we actually capture people being in the city. So I wanted to do that, as well as having three licenses that allow for cultivation. After the first year that we looked at this, to identify which process we would be able to actually add to those if they were worth it. Also, like I said, have the option to increase. Following, number one, always following all state guidelines, keep avoiding the sensitive areas that you all had mentioned. Staying away from childcare schools and other addiction centers would be the best idea, I think, for the way the city would work here. And then also allowing us to locate them somewhere along the lines of where our breweries are, simply over there in the industrial areas, spaces like that. But also, when looking at these spaces, I think it would make a lot of sense for us to keep them regulated, the similar to the way that we do liquor stores. Caught my minutes?
Yep.
Got you. Thank you.
If you could, if you could please submit that to either Vaughn or Mr. Kim, our city attorney...
No problem.
So that it's so noted. And again, the proceedings are being recorded, so I'm sure we'll review that, too.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
And you could also submit your comments and your questions to, by email. We have an email exclusively for the working committee at cannabis@cityofhawthorne.org.
No problem. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your comments.
And let me just also say that, you know, all these suggestions, we'll be going through, in fact, the zoning will be going through the planning commission, just like any other zoning amendment, so, and then the city council as well.
If there's anything further, I am going to go ahead and conclude the working group committee on cannabis at the time now of 3:55. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Safe travels.